Everybody, to the April 16th Parker Town Council Meeting, I will reconvene our council meeting at 7:01 PM. Council, please sign in. All council members are present. Now, I do know we have a few under 18s in the room, right? Do we have any scouts in the room? If you're under 18, boy scouts, girl scouts, cub scouts?
Wee blows included too.
None? Alright, how about this, if you're under 18, come on down.
Where would you like us to stand?
Yeah, you're here for a homework assignment or something? Guess what, you've got some duties to do.
He's gonna earn that.
You're gonna earn it. Come on down right up front here, people. If you're under 18, you guys are gonna lead us in the most important part of tonight's meeting, and that is the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? So here's the way it's gonna work, guys. All you under 18-year-olds, the floor's gonna be yours. We're all gonna turn around and address our flag. We're gonna wait to hear you start the pledge, then everyone's gonna kick in behind you. Sound good?
Yeah.
Alright.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent job! Good job! A+. A+. And you can't go home now. It's always interesting though, because depending on the assignment from their teachers, sometimes you have to be at a meeting for an hour, and sometimes you have to be at the meeting the whole time. So, we're gonna see if at 8 o'clock, how many of you get up and hightail it out of here. Now that I've thrown that down, everyone should stay. So, I don't believe we have any special presentations tonight, is that correct, Michelle? Alright. Next item up, which we're actually gonna skip, is our Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. I know Dennis sends his regards, he's not able to make it tonight. So the next item on our agenda is for general public comment, for any item that is not on our agenda tonight. So if you're here for anything not on our agenda, and you'd like to address council, no action will be taken. You'll have a three-minute time limit, and this is the time to come on down. Seeing none, I will close general public comment at 7:03. Next item is reports, items and comments for mayor and council. With the length of tonight's meeting, I've asked council to forego their updates for tonight, I hope you guys are all kosher with that. I am gonna give one little update, though, my hair. When the bottle says "don't go swimming," 30 minutes after applying, "don't go swimming." None of you guys got that? You guys are... It's alright. No, every year I do an event for pediatric cancer for the St. Baldry's Foundation called Shave the Mayor. Shave my head, shave my beard. Paul's doing it as well, look at him, he's gonna shave that massive, nice man mane.
I am signed up for it, Mr. Mayor.
I saw, I saw you on there. We've got others in the room, Todd Hendricks is gonna do it. Believe it or not, Debbie Lewis did it a few years ago with me. It's an event that I do, this'll be our sixth annual event. Every time we've done it, well, the last five times we've done it, I hold a little side fundraiser. And whoever either makes the biggest donation, or a certain number of donations, or this or that, gets to choose the color of my hair. Last year it was Rockies purple, the year before that it was Broncos orange and blue. This year, it's rainbow. So, it's interesting how easily now I can hear the word rainbow in crowds wherever I go, because it seems to always be sat around me. So that's the reason for my hair. I wasn't, didn't realize we were gonna be on, which channel are we?
Channel 7.
Channel 7. I didn't realize we were gonna be on Channel 7 tonight, or I would've done my hair. But, you get what you get. So, there we go. So, next item up is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine, will be enacted with one motion and one vote, unless a council member asks to have something removed for further discussion. So with that, council, I would entertain further discussion or motion on consent agenda items 6A through 6K.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a, who motioned it? Motion from Amy, and a second from Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, kids, you might've noticed that when the votes happened up on the board there, all the lights were green except for one. And it wasn't because my hair outdoes the lights on there, it's because in the town of Parker, by charter, the mayor doesn't vote on stuff. Council does. So you'll see that I only voted when it was time to check in, to make sure we were here. Now, I do have veto power, and I do have the ability to break a tie on some things if these guys happen to do a tie, but there's a little education for you to take back to your class. Alright. Next up, we've got our Town Administrators Report, which I know is new, and is just posted online. So if all of y'all would like at some point, you can jump online to parkeronline.org and see our quarterly Town Administrators Report. Chock full of wonderful information about the town of Parker, statistics, numbers, things going on, everything you'd wanna know. It's a great resource, so please, take advantage of that. Alright. We just wanna go ahead and adjourn the meeting? No? Just kidding, everybody. It's okay, it's okay. We're gonna go ahead and start our next item, which is item number eight. This is a public hearing for grasslands, prairie, trail annexation, and zoning. What we have here is four items. We have item 8A, which is Resolution Number 18-032. This is a resolution to set forth Town Council's findings of fact and conclusions as to the eligibility of the grasslands, prairie, trail property for annexation into the town of Parker. Item 8B is Ordinance Number 2.259 on second reading. This is a bill for an emergency ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory known as the grasslands, prairie, trail property in Douglas County. 8C is Ordinance Number 3.333 on second reading. This is a bill for an emergency ordinance zoning certain property within the town of Parker, Colorado, known as the grasslands, prairie, trail property, to PD, Plan Development District pursuant to the Town of Parker's Land Development Code, and amending the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And item 8D is the annexation, excuse me, annexation agreement. So tonight, just to clarify for everyone, and make sure everyone's all on the same page, our procedure and our process is gonna be a little bit different than our normal public hearings. We actually, council put forth a change for tonight to allow an extended period for presentations. We're gonna have a presentation from staff here in a moment, then the applicant is gonna come forward with a presentation. There is a 30-minute time limit on the applicant, that's what the 30 is above here. So, same rules apply for that, as it does for public comment. Once that gets to zero, even if you, as the applicant, are in mid-sentence, I'm gonna cut you off and thank you for your presentation. But what's a little different is we are also going to give the property, the Vista South lot owners, an opportunity, 30 minutes as well, to give a presentation as well. Same rules, once that hits zero, if you're mid-sentence, I'm gonna cut you off. Then we're gonna have public comment, and public comment, three-minute time limit per person, that's when we're gonna use the on-deck circle and line up, and swing away. Everybody good? Alright, cool. So with that, Paul, of course, you are going to lead us in the presentation tonight.
I am. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before we jump into the presentation this evening, staff does have some findings that we'd like to read into the record related to notification for the hearings this evening.
Please do.
On February 22nd, 2018, petitions for annexation were submitted to the town to annex the subject property. On March 5th, 2018, Town Council approved Resolution Number 18-021, series of 2018, which determined that the petition was in substantial compliance with state law, and set the eligibility hearing for April 16th, 2018. The notice for eligibility hearing was published in the Douglas County Press, excuse me, Douglas County News Press between the week of March 8th, 2018, and the week, April 12th, 2018. The affidavit of publication was uploaded into Track-It. On March 8th and March 12th, 2018, letters were sent to representatives of Vista South LLC for lots 6A-1 and 6A-2 in Comm Park Business Campus Metropolitan District for Track C, Comm Park filing number two. Advising of the annexation petition, Resolution Number 18-21, and the zoning application, including the hearing dates for the planning commission and the town council, as well as providing the link to the town's website to access the documents associated with this land use matter through Track-It. On March 9th, 2018, a copy of the published notice, together with a copy of the resolution and petition, was filed, as filed, was sent by registered mail to the clerk of the Douglas County Board and County Commissioners, the Douglas County Attorney, the Douglas County School District, and the special districts having territory within the area to be annexed as provided by state law. The zoning application was submitted on March 6th, 2018, and the public hearing notice for the April 12th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, and the April 16th, 2018 Town Council meeting, were published, mailed, posted 15 days before these public hearings, as provided by the Parker Land Development Ordinance. The website notice was published on the town website on March 21st, 2018. The first-class letters were mailed to abutting property owners on March 22nd, 2018, and the signs were posted on all seven lots that are the subject of the zoning application on March 23rd, 2018. The affidavits for those notices were uploaded to Track-It on April 3rd, 2018. The three-mile area plan, which includes the area covered by the annexation map, was approved on December 11th, 2017. The legal description and continuity calculation for the annexation map was prepared by Dean E. Cates, a Colorado licensed professional land surveyor. According to the annexation map prepared by Mr. Cates, the map accurately delineates the parcel of land to be annexed to the town of Parker, Colorado, and that at least one-sixth of the boundary of said parcel is contiguous to the present town of Parker, County of Douglas, State of Colorado. A community of interest exists between the property and the town of Parker, and the property will be urbanized in the near future. The property is integrated, or is capable of being integrated, within the town of Parker. The limitations of the Municipal Annexation Act and the Constitution of the State of Colorado do not prevent the annexation of the property, or any part thereof, since: A) No land in the territory to be annexed, which is held in identical ownership and consists of either a single tract or parcel, or two or more continuous tracts or parcels, has been divided, or portion thereof excluded from the area to be annexed without the written consent of the owners thereof. B) No land in the territory to be annexed, which is held in identical ownership and comprises 20 or more acres, having an assessed valuation for ad valorem tax purposes in excess of $200,000 in the year next preceding the annexation, has been included in the area to be annexed without the written consent of the landowners. C) No proceedings have been commenced by another municipality for the annexation of all or part of the territory to be annexed by the town of Parker. And D) The annexation will not result in the detachment of the area from the school district in which it is currently located. The proposed annexation will not have the effect of extending the town boundary more than three miles in any direction from any point of the town boundary in any one year. The entire width of any alley, street, to be annexed is included within the annexation. The town staff record of this matter is contained on Track-It, which can be accessed by any member of the public under Town of Parker Annexation Case Number ANX18-001, and Town of Parker Zoning Case Number Z18-009. On April 2nd, 2018, the Town Council based a request by legal counsel for Vista South LLC, passed Resolution Number 18-036, which will allow Vista South LLC and Comm Park Business Campus Metropolitan District to collectively have the same amount of time as the petitioner slash applicant to present their respective positions as provided by this resolution. Copies of the request by legal counsel for Vista South LLC and this resolution are a part of the record in this matter. That would conclude the initial written statement. With that, we will move along to the public hearing. As was just previously referenced, the two cases this evening are case ANX18, excuse me, ANX18-001, and Z18-009, for the annexation and zoning of the grasslands slash prairie trail area. Subject property is generally located west of Prairie Trail Drive, east of Upland Drive, south of the Arapahoe County and Douglas County border, and north of Comm Park Boulevard. It is owned Comm Park Plan Development in Douglas County, which allows for a variety of uses, including some general industrial uses. Subject property itself is roughly 45 acres in size, and the request this evening is to annex the subject property into the town of Parker, and zone it with a Town of Parker Plan Development designation to allow for the same uses that are allowed in the Comm Park development, excluding the general industrial uses and certain light industrial uses. In short, the town has contemplated the annexation and ultimate incorporation of this area of unincorporated Douglas County into the town of Parker since 2002. The town in Douglas County formalized this understanding in 2002 with an intergovernmental agreement, establishing the comprehensive development plan and the town's growth boundary in this area. This agreement is important because it provides predictability for the county, the town, and property owners as to land use control and future development. More particularly, the zoning request is part of the natural and well-ordered development of the town of Parker, as a part of the comprehensive development plan that was approved more than 15 years ago. The image on the screen in front of you shows the subject property outlined in black, the master plan designations surrounding the subject property. The blue indicates an area designated for future employment uses, which generally accommodate a variety of uses, including commercial and light industrial uses. The pink area is for mixed uses that generally accommodate commercial uses and some residential uses. And then the yellow areas are those areas that are called out for medium-density residential uses, which generally translate into single-family density residential. For clarity, the town's urban growth boundary is the red line that is shown at the top, the left, and then at the bottom of the screen. As contemplated by the comprehensive development plan and the town's master plan, the town has annexed several properties in this area. Those properties that are designated by color are properties that have been annexed and zoned by the town. This, again, the urban growth boundary at the top in red, and on the left side, and on the bottom. The purple area is area that is currently zoned for employment, commercial, light industrial, and non-residential uses. The requested plan development zoning is consistent with the town master plan for employment with the area, as well as the extension of these employment, commercial, light industrial, and non-residential uses. The red area on this slide is property that is currently zoned for mixed uses, and the yellow area is property that is zoned for residential uses. The plan development itself is structured as one planning area covering all seven properties. The intent of this plan development is intended to allow for land use flexibility and versatility. It's expected to attract regional distribution warehouses, research and development carriers, regional community and business services, and supporting facilities. All existing and approved uses within the subject property this evening are currently allowed by the proposed plan development. And then, in order to continue the natural and well-ordered development of the town of Parker as part of that comprehensive development plan that was approved more than 15 years ago, the planned unit development, excuse me, the plan development matches the Comm Park Plan Development currently adopted by Douglas County, minus those uses that are inconsistent with the town's master plan for the area, and the existing light industrial and educational uses that have been developed in the area. The uses that the applicants are requesting be removed are detailed on the slide before In performing a review of the annexation application, the Community Development Department applied the following standards to that review. The first is that the property is within the town's growth area. It complies with the town's land development ordinance, and future development will comply with the town's design standards. The request is consistent with the town's adopted master plans. The property can be used without danger to public health, safety, or welfare. The property meets the requirements of the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965. The request meets the requirements of Article 2, Section 30 of the Colorado Constitution. The lands will be subject to the rules and regulations of the town, except for property taxes that will become effective January 1 of the next succeeding year. The petitioners agree that there are no vested property rights, and that the petitioners acknowledge that the property is subject to all town taxes and fees, and waive any claims under Article 10 of the Colorado Constitution. And looking at the rezoning request, there are nine approval criteria for a zoning request here in the town of Parker. All nine of those criteria were detailed in staff's report that were provided to Town Council ahead of the meeting this evening. Staff won't go through each of those nine approval criteria, but there are some criteria that will be highlighted for the purposes of this presentation. That first criteria is that a need exists for the proposal. Essentially, the need is established by, the zoning will expand the economic base of the town by creating jobs and opportunities in the E470 corridor, as was contemplated and intended, and consistent with the town's master plan designation for employment for the subject property. It also provides an orderly transition of land uses and growth from the E470 and the existing residential uses to these non-residential uses. The second zoning criteria to be highlighted this evening is the parcel of ground is the correct site for the proposed development. The subject property's been identified as the correct site for employment uses for several years, starting in 2002, with the town in Douglas County agreeing that this area would be part of the town's desired annexation area. In short, the subject property has been identified for many years, over 15 years at this point, to be annexed, zoned, and developed in the town for employment uses. Therefore, the subject property is the correct site for the development described in the proposed plan development. The third criteria is actually approval criteria number four, that there have been significant changes in the area to warrant the requested zone change. Over the last 20 years, this particular area has seen changes in growth. It has developed as an employment, commercial, educational center with residential uses. The requested zoning will retain most of the development standards and uses that are permitted in the Douglas County zoning, but will exclude those uses that conflict with the town's comprehensive plan, the Parker 2035 Master Plan, also known as, as well as the comprehensive development plan, and those uses that it developed in the area over the last 20 years. So based on the development located in and around the subject property over this course of time, as well as the reference guiding documents, there have been changes in the area to warrant the new zoning. With that, staff recommends that Town Council vote to approve the grasslands, prairie, trail annexation to bring the subject property into the town of Parker. And, as it relates to the zoning, on April 12th of this year, Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that Town Council approve the Grasslands, Prairie, Trail Development Planning Guide to allow for this zoning request to continue the natural and well-ordered development of the town of Parker as part of the comprehensive development plan that was approved more than 15 years ago. That would conclude staff's formal presentation, however, the town did receive a letter from Centennial Airport that staff would like to read into the record at this time.
Please do.
Dated April 12th of this year, Ms. Michelle Kivla, Dear Ms. Kivla, Mayor and Town Council, and Members of the Planning Commission, the purpose of this letter is to provide comments to the town of Parker regarding the proposed annexation and zoning of the property known as the grasslands slash prairie trail property, quote, "the property on behalf of the Arapahoe County Public Airport Authority," quote, "airport authority, owner and operator of Centennial Airport." It is our understanding that the property includes the area proposed as the Vista South LLC Waste Transfer Facility, quote, "waste transfer facility," a use proposed in Douglas County. The authority has previously responded on August 24th of 2017, and December 19th of 2017, to the Douglas County Department of Community Development regarding the concerns of the authority related to the proposed waste transfer facility. As one of the busiest airports in the US, a waste transfer facility near the airport is a serious threat to the safety and welfare of pilots, crew, and passengers arriving and departing Centennial Airport. The Federal Aviation Administration, quote, "FAA," is deeply concerned about the waste facilities becoming a wildlife attractant, and in particular, birds. Based on the concerns we have previously expressed to Douglas County about the proposed use, the authority unequivocally supports annexation of the property into the town of Parker, and the zoning of the property to prohibit the waste transfer facility within the restricted development area of Centennial Airport. The development of the property to include a waste transfer facility is incompatible because of its proximity to the Centennial Airport, and the proposed waste transfer facility specifically appears to be within 3,900 feet of the nearest end of the Crosswind Runway. While the authority understands that the site plan submitted to Douglas County identifies the waste transfer facility as a, quote, "indoor facility," the mere fact that trucks must enter and exit the waste transfer facility means that the facility will not be permanently, quote, "sealed," and thus, will attract birds and other wildlife regardless of whether it is characterized as indoor. As stated, waste facilities of any kind are incompatible with the airport. The hazards created by such facilities, even if mitigated, create unacceptable risk to aircraft arriving and departing the Centennial Airport. Accordingly, the authority supports the annexation and zoning of the property into the town of Parker as a means of preventing the incompatible waste transfer facility from developing in an area that will be a hazard to aircraft arriving and departing the Centennial Airport, and therefore, the surrounding area. Thank you much, very much, for the opportunity to comment on the proposed annexation and zoning of the property into the town of Parker. Respectfully yours, Robert Oluslager. That was, that's the end of the, of the letter. At this time, I believe Mr. Hoffman also has a few remarks to make.
Okay. Cory?
Mr. Mayor, may I approach briefly?
Absolutely. You said briefly, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of Town Council, on behalf of the staff of the town of Parker, the purpose of this correspondence and what I've provided to you is to request that the following facts also be made part of the record of the public hearing in this matter. On February 22nd, 2018, petitions for annexation were submitted to the town to annex the property at issue tonight. Included with the annexation application were title reports for each of the seven lots that are part of the subject property to be annexed. According to the February 13th, 2018 Title Report for lots 6A-1 and 6A-2, quote, "the Vista South lots," end quote, these lots are owned by Vista South LLC, a Colorado Limited Liability Company. The title report for the Vista South lots were updated on several occasions. As of an April 12th, 2018 update with an effective date of April 4th, 2018, the Vista South lots continued to be owned by Vista South LLC, a Colorado Limited Liability Company. However, on April 13th, 2018, the title company notified the town that Vista South LLC had conveyed by bargain and sale deed to Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC for $10, an undivided 50% interest in lot 6A-2 as a tenant in common. The title reports and bargain and sale deed were downloaded to Track-It and are part of the record in this matter. On March 5th, 2018, Town Council approved Resolution Number 18-021, series of 2018, which determined that the petition was in substantial compliance with state law, and set the eligibility public hearing for April 16th, 2018. As of March 5th, 2018, Vista South LLC was the only owner of the Vista South lots. On March 8th and March 12th, 2018, the town attorney sent letters to legal counsel for Vista South LLC for lots 6A-1 and 6A-2, advising of the annexation petition, Resolution Number 18-21, and the zoning application, including the hearing dates for the planning commission and the town council, as well as providing the link to the town's website to access the documents associated with this land use matter through Track-It. As recently as March 2nd, 2018, W. Scott Eden, as president of Vista South LLC, represented in writing to the Community Development Director of Douglas County that Vista South LLC was the owner of the Vista South lots, and that the lawyers of Fagery Baker Daniels LLP and Otten Johnson Robinson Neffen Raganetti PC were authorized to serve as its agents and representatives concerning Douglas County Case File Number ZR2018-001. Fagery Baker Daniels LLP, as agent and representative of Vista South LLC, filed a written request on March 5th, 2018, to the Director of Community Development for Douglas County, that Vista South LLC, as the owner of the Vista South lots, should have party status in Douglas County Case File Number ZR2018-001. Similarly, as recently as March 16th, 2018, another attorney with the Parker Law Firm of Fagery Baker Daniels LLP, represented in writing to the Parker Town Attorney that she was representing Vista South LLC as the owner of the Vista South lots. A copy of these written communications were downloaded to Track-It and made part of the record in this matter. On April 3rd, 2018, Legal Counsel for Vista South LLC sent an email to the City Attorney for the City of Centennial, advising that the next day he would hand-deliver three petitions to the City Clerk of Centennial to annex the Vista South lots into the City of Centennial. According to Legal Counsel for Vista South LLC, quote, "The receipt by Centennial of our client's petitions during the statutory notice period will require both Parker and Centennial to hold in abeyance any proceedings on the annexation of the properties until an election of the landowners can be held to determine which municipality can continue such proceedings." This was also the date that W. Scott Eden signed the bargain and sale deed conveying a 50% undivided interest in lot 6A-1 to Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC. A copy of the email was downloaded to Track-It and is made a part of the record in this matter. On April 4th, 2018, Legal Counsel for Vista South LLC sent a letter to the town attorney requesting that the town stop processing Town of Parker Annexation Case Number 18-001, the, quote, "demand letter," end quote. From a review of the demand letter, the town-
From a review of the demand letter, the town learned for the first time that there had apparently been a change of ownership in one of the Vista South lots from Vista South LLC being the 100% sole owner of lot 6A-2, to Vista South LLC only owning an undivided 50% interest in lot 6A-2, and Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC owning the other 50% of lot 6A-2. This was also the same date that the bargain and sale deed was recorded with the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder. The demand letter was downloaded to track it and is made a part of the record in this matter. Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC was created on March 23rd, 2018. According to the Secretary of State, the, quote, "person," end quote, that created Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC was Mountain Waste &amp; Recycling, Inc., which is also the registered agent of Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC. The person that caused the filings of the Articles of Incorporation for Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC is W. Scott Eden. A copy of these Secretary of State records were downloaded to track it and are made a part of the record in this matter. Vista South LLC was formed on October 12th, 2016, approximately two months before Vista South LLC acquired 100% fee simple ownership in the Vista South lots, which was December 29th, 2016. According to the Secretary of State, Mountain Waste &amp; Recycling, Inc. is also the registered agent for Vista South LLC, and W. Scott Eden is the person that filed the most recent periodic report for Vista South LLC. A copy of the vesting deed into Vista South LLC and the referenced Secretary of State records were downloaded to track it and are made a part of the record in this matter. According to the Secretary of State, the address for W. Scott Eden, Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC, Vista South LLC, and Mountain Waste &amp; Recycling, Inc. is 10100 East 102nd Avenue, Henderson, Colorado 80640. As with Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC and Vista South LLC, W. Scott Eden filed the last periodic statement for both. A copy of the referenced Secretary of State records were downloaded to track it and are made a part of the record in this matter. According to the most recently updated information on the Douglas County website regarding the application seeking land use approval for the Vista South lots, Douglas County Site Improvement Plan Case Number SP 2017-056, the, quote, "Douglas County" application, end quote, the, quote, "owner," end quote, is still listed as Vista South LLC. Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC is not listed as an owner for purposes of the Douglas County application. There is little doubt that the recent change in ownership of lot 6A-2 from just Vista South LLC being the sole owner to Vista South LLC and Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC each owning an undivided 50% interest is a tactic to prevent the town from processing the annexation petitions that were submitted to the town. The tactic of conveying an undivided 50% interest in ownership of lot 6A-2 to a limited liability company following the town attorney's notification to Legal Counsel for Vista South LLC of the Town Council's adoption of Resolution Number 18-021 and the setting of the public hearing to annex and zone the Vista South lots was a tactic to manufacture an additional property owner in contravention of the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965, and as such, the Town Council should refuse to recognize this transfer as valid. As previously discussed, the April 4th, 2018 demand letter that was sent to the Town Attorney requested that the town stop processing Town of Parker Annexation Case Number ANX 18-001, which would include tonight's hearing because petitions to annex the Vista South lots had been submitted to the City of Centennial on April 3rd, 2018. These petitions were signed by W. Scott Eden as the manager and chief executive officer for both Vista South LLC and Mountain Water-South Metro LLC, which had been created just nine days before these petitions were filed with the City of Centennial. Town representatives contacted the City of Centennial and quickly learned that the City of Centennial had not requested these petitions, had no desire to annex any portion of Douglas County, let alone the Vista South lots, and had absolutely no intention of participation in this annexation proceeding despite the demands made by Legal Counsel for Vista South LLC. There is no doubt that the filing of these petitions was another tactic to prevent the town from processing the annexation petitions that were submitted to the town in contravention of the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965. On April 9th, 2018, the City of Centennial, or the City Council of the City of Centennial passed, quote, "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Centennial legislatively declaring a lack of intent to annex property located within Douglas County and electing not to receive annexation petitions filed with the City Clerk on April 4th, 2018 pursuant to the discretion afforded by CRS Section 31-12-114 Subsection 1," end quote. The passage of this resolution rejected the annexation petitions that were filed with Centennial, thereby terminating one of the two tactics used to prevent the town from processing the annexation petitions that were submitted to the town in contravention of the Municipal Annexation Act of 1965. A copy of the resolution is attached heretofu and was downloaded to track it and is made a part of the record in this matter. On April 12th, 2018, Vista South LLC and the barely three-week-old Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC, in furtherance of this tactic, filed a lawsuit against the Town of Parker and the City of Centennial to enjoin the Town Council of the Town of Parker from holding tonight's hearing and to require the City of Centennial to process an annexation petition for lots that had no interest in annexing. On April 16th, 2018, the Douglas County District Court Judge Paul A. King issued a final ruling denying the request from Vista South LLC and Mountain Waste-South Metro LLC to stop tonight's hearing, and finding that the City of Centennial's determination to legislatively reject the annexation petitions and the Town of Parker's determination to proceed with tonight's legislative proceedings are consistent with the provisions of CRS Section 31-12-114 of the Annexation Act. On behalf of the Town Staff, thank you for considering this information.
Corey, thank you very much for, for your update on that. All right, Council, before we have the applicant come up, do you guys have any questions? Nope. All right, so at this point, if the applicant is here to come forward, oop, I see a crutch and careful on that step. All right, there you go. And just as a reminder, as I mentioned earlier, there's the thirty-minute clock above. You'll state your name and address for the record. When you start your presentation, I'll start the timer. When we get to zero, I'll cut off the, the presentation, so.
So, Jay Rolls and the property 148810, Grasslands Drive. Mr. Mayor, Council members, since everybody asks, broken leg, two broken shoulders.
Oh, goodness.
So, I'm Jay Rolls and I'm the Chief Technology Officer of Charter Communications and I, I work in the building 14810 on, on Grasslands Drive. So, I'd like to talk a little bit about this building because it's very interesting. I want to make sure you're aware of what's going on there and how we use it and why we're there. Charter, you may not know Charter, but we're a very large company. We operate in forty-one states and we are a Fortune 100 company. Ninety-three thousand employees. In the state of Colorado, we have about 4,300 and we expect to grow to 5,000 in the end of nineteen. When I got here in 2011, we had 350 employees, so we've been growing like crazy here, so. Here's the, here's the place where we reside. It is a building that we built three, four years ago, leased to 14810, and we spent about 25 million on that. Then we have leased another building next door, spent another 15 million on that. On top of the 40 million in real estate investment, we've spent about that same amount in electronics that have gone into the building, so a lot, a lot is invested here. We have 400 employees there and about 150 contractors, so sizable team. While this building looks a little generic, these tilt-up buildings do from the outside, I assure you the inside is quite different, and we can see on these photos here. It is very much state-of-the-art, and of over Charter's thousand real estate sites we have across our nation, there's no doubt this is the nicest site we have. And everybody who works in here, sorry, I shouldn't say everybody, eighty to ninety percent of my team that's in here are degreed engineers, so these are, these are really hard-to-find people. When we were looking at where to, to do this lab, what the story was is we had about five or six labs across the nation, Charlotte, Herndon, Virginia, St. Louis, and two in Denver, all smaller states of disarray, and we're like, we gotta, we gotta consolidate all this and build one lab altogether. And, you know, at the time, the governor, municipalities, counties were all out touting, you know, Colorado's the place to be, even offering incentives, some of which we took advantage of to build this building, and that was a big part of why we landed on the site, and we've been very happy there. I get a kick out of when there used to be cattle next door, so. Next slide. So, you know, we did not anticipate the, how things have evolved here with the proposed, proposed trash processing facility, and I think we have two major concerns. One is traffic, and, you know, if you haven't seen the stats, we, you know, I put some of them in the slide here, it's a substantial amount of traffic, and for us, we worry about not only traffic from a traffic standpoint, but also traffic, how it might influence our laboratory itself. If you go to the next slide, and by the way, I have, I don't know if you all have this, so I have Vista South's traffic study that I'd like to enter in the record if that's okay. So we have, for instance, one example is fiber optics equipment that we have there that, that has tolerances in the micron, single-digit microns, so a strand of hair is 75 microns, so, so very, very, so we have concerns from, from like a vibration standpoint, and, and so that's one of our concerns. The next slide is sort of more what you would sort of assume would be the standard suite of concerns with, next to a trash facility, the odors, any pests that are, that are attracted, but also we do a lot of outdoor things in our, in our facility. I don't know if you could see in the photo, we have these big garage doors in our break room and, and we have, it's a little bit of food desert out there, so we have food trucks that come most days, and we have a patio. Our employees are outside getting food every day, so it, it would, a smell like I've seen in other trash facilities would definitely be detrimental. There's also a risk of fire. Some of you may recall the Commerce City Fire from last year that happened in another trash processing facility. So here's an example of, of our patio and sort of our, our outdoor environment that we have there. So we don't, we don't sort of come in our cars, get out, go inside this, you know, sealed building and, and not take advantage of, you know, Colorado's great outdoors here, so. There's an additional risk that we're concerned about with aircraft. We see these aircraft fly right over our building. We're, we're right on the sightline of one of the crossrunways on Centennial Airport, and there is pretty heavy traffic. Most of the time, it's a single-engine pistons, but if the winds blow in the right way, I did see a jet land the other day, so it can be all kinds of air traffic. Also, I'd like to put in the record an FAA study we have about trash facilities being located close to, close to airports, and this, this study by the FAA even includes sort of enclosed or sealed or quasi-sealed, and you've got all these trucks going in and out, but facility like is mentioned in the Vista South proposal, so. So, we're concerned. I, you know, I, I have to attract a lot of talent. I've recently lost people in the last year or two to Intel, to Amazon, had a guy move to Seattle. I'm also very happy that I was able to attract three Google people from the Bay Area here in the last year, and, you know, that's tough because they expect a lot of amenities. I don't offer free food, I don't offer a restaurant onsite, you know, but a trash facility is not going to be high on the amenity list of what my engineers are looking for, so. So I, I think that sort of lays out some of the concerns from Charter's perspective. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up?
Good evening and thank you for letting me express my views. My name is Mark Lestico. My wife and I own the building located at 8480 Upland Drive, which is on the corner of Grasslands and Upland Drive. Just a little, little bit of a map there. The building we bought, we bought it in 2005. It's really our major family investment for my wife and our three children and I, and it's a 64,800 square foot building. We have three tenants currently in the building, Closet Factory, Front Range Volleyball Club, and BiOSAT, Inc. Closet Factory happens to be owned by my wife and I, Polly. It's a, we occupy half the building and, yeah, thank you. We've been in business for 26 years. We design, manufacture, and install custom storage solutions for homeowners and residential home builders. We like to say we create, we turn chaos into order. We occupy, again, half the building. We employ 75 people. When we moved in, we were at about 40, so we've had, seen significant growth with the economy the way it is. Our employees are on-site six days a week. We run 11 installation crews six days a week, including Saturdays, and they generally get between, oh, 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 in the morning and get back between 4:00 and 6:00. We have a state-of-the-art showroom in our facility, and what that means is we have customers from around the city, from around the state, come in, meet with our designers to go over selections and to order product for their closets and home offices, et cetera. So we have quite a bit of customer base coming in every week. The neighbor to us, one of our tenants, is Front Range Volleyball Club. They're a nationally recognized volleyball club. Probably a lot of people in this place have children that play volleyball. They train and coach men and women, young men and women ages 11 through 18. They generally train and practice onsite after school, in the evenings, and on weekends, and many of the athletes that they train are high school students that drive to and from our building, and a lot of times, especially in the winter at night, in the dark. BiOSAT, Inc. is a satellite dish provider. Won't talk much about them. Their lease expires in May and they're, they have not renewed, so if anybody knows anybody that needs the space, let me know. We, we, we oppose the trash transfer facility. We would like to be annexed by the City of Parker, number one. We feel like you've done a great job of looking forward and planning in the area. We've seen tremendous, that whole area has, has really made us proud. Again, we were very early in that area. It was basically dirt and coyotes and things, so we're, we're very pleased with the way it's turning out and we're, we're very concerned about having this facility come in. And really, it's going to protect, we feel, if we, if you annex us, it will basically protect Closet Factory, our business, our building, and our tenants. Now, my, the study that I saw, I know there are a lot of numbers flying around, but, but we saw in a Kimley Horn Traffic Impact Study that up to 2,500 new trips per day could be coming into our area. Again, we're just off Grasslands Drive there. That's 104 per hour. Just think of the number, 104 new vehicles per hour. You know, we're, we're here to protect our employees, our customers, and really especially our student athletes. Again, many of them are driving in the dark, so we're, we're concerned about that. Again, no matter what, how state-of-the-art a facility it is, trash is still trash, and I don't use the term lightly, but it smells. And one of the first things my office manager said when I mentioned kind of what was going on and what I was doing here, she said, "Have you ever driven by the Arapahoe Station," which is another trash facility off of Jordan Road, and she said, "If you're driving when the wind's in the wrong direction, it smells." So, and again, the bird presence, as Jay mentioned, we're pretty much right over the flight path of the, of the Centennial Airport. Planes fly over our building all the time, and we're very concerned about that as well. So, we're, we're just, that's, that's my case. We're, we would love to be annexed and for those reasons, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up?
Yes, I'm Zach Kessler for Wood Spear Properties. We represent the Prairie Trail Business Park, address 8591, 8595, and 8599 Prairie Trail Drive. Wood Spear is a tech center in Southern California-based privately-held real estate owner- Wood Spear is a tech center in Southern California-based privately-held real estate owner-operator of apartments and industrial buildings and throughout the Western United States, and we're the controlling owner of Wood Spear Prairie Trail Business Park here. We acquired this property, next slide, in 2015. It's a flex office property. We acquired it for investment with other private investors. It's our main focus. We only, we don't invest in high cube distribution facilities. We invest in really flex-type spaces with the lower clear heights, just like this property. We focus on high-quality areas, tilt-up construction with barriers to entry and well-established mixed-use type areas. This is a three-building property. It's on the southern portion of the area, proposed to be annexed and rezoned. It's approximately 83,000 square feet with 14-foot clear height and roll-up drive indoors, so no dock height loading. It's high image. If any of you have been by it, with great window lines. It's also primarily built out to be at least 50% office or more, which is a high attractant to our tenants and was a high attractant to our investors. We have 13 tenants with about 150 to 200 employees at any given time. We actually have one vacancy, so again, 4,200 square feet, if anybody needs space. But our tenants really range in a variety of uses, really from dental supply and warehousing to high-tech defense work. We have light manufacturing. We have general contractors, engineers. These are the types of jobs that the town, in my experience, is also being a resident here want for their employment base. And our tenants are attracted to this facility specifically because it's easy for them to get their employees to and easy for their clients and customers to get to, which is a big reason for us wanting to annex into the town and prevent some of these heavier industrial uses from really kind of changing the character of the area. Next one. I'm not going to read the slide here, but this really shows our purpose for being involved here. Our purpose is to protect our investment and the expectations of our investors as well as our tenants. We believe we have a duty to maintain the image and attractiveness of our business park. We do all of our asset management in-house, and so we work directly with our brokers and our tenants on a daily basis in terms of property management and understanding the needs of their businesses. So we're here to really protect what we view as the established order in this area. In our discussions with our brokerage teams, you know, and discussions directly with our current tenants, they view heavy industrial uses, including, you know, outdoor construction, correctional facilities, trash transfer facilities, as a material negative to their attraction to this property. And they also have concerns about the actual makeup of trash trucks, not just the facility itself. But when we talk about traffic, the other applicants have noted the general traffic concerns. But our concerns are actually also, and our tenants have mentioned this, some of them are involved in construction services, are concerned about the actual trucks themselves being, you know, more dangerous than a Honda Civic. Next slide. So I won't go over the town's growth boundary. I think staff covered all that. But our purpose here is to say that we think the proposed rezoning and annexation is consistent with the area, how it's developed since these plans were put into place. It continues to allow for employment-based zoning that's safe for the neighboring residential communities and the existing land uses. And it's been, it really maintains our investment thesis of seeking properties that are more office-focused versus, you know, things you'd expect with, in terms of, you know, high truck traffic. We also have, I'd like to go ahead and present five actual letters of support from five of our tenants supporting the annexation and rezoning. And I want to thank the Town Council for their time, and we appreciate you hearing us out today. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Next up?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Kent Carver. I'm here representing Admar Grasslands LLC. Admar is the owner of the building where Baxter currently is a tenant and is the closest to the proposed facility. Baxter, as you've, in addition to what you've heard earlier about vacant space coming up, Baxter's lease ends at the end of this year, so the property is being actively marketed for lease or sale. It's a unique property in that it has been used to make very high-end sterile medical products. It's got a very large clean room, and the prospective users are interested in that aspect, either for a similar use or for biotech or drug development. All good employing type of uses for this area and ones that would be consistent with some of the surrounding uses. In fact, I think you've heard from the other applicants. Next slide, please. This is a outside picture of the facility, so it's, again, very consistent with the neighborhood and a nice state-of-the-art facility. I think all of the applicants, I'm not speaking for the other ones, but I think you've heard the term certainty, compatibility, and consistency, and that's certainly what we would be looking for as well. The issue of the potential of a waste transfer facility being next door comes at a time when, in marketing the property, that has to be an immediate disclosure. And it is an absolute deal killer. If anyone is serious about the building and they hear this, that's fine. We're still interested, but any interest would be contingent upon that not happening. So for those reasons, this is a, obviously, a very critical matter before you. And I would comment on the fact, this is an unusual situation. I've handled many, many annexations in my 30-plus years of practice, and nobody's going to say that this isn't unusual. The interplay between the applicant with the county and the county's position on this makes me want to ask if this were to go through and you were to drive past a waste transfer facility in this neighborhood in five years, would you look back and say, "What were they thinking? Is this really the right thing in this area?" I am a huge, huge property rights proponent, but your right to use your property in a certain fashion ends at your property line when it impacts your neighbors. I know one of the other uses, again bizarre, is for prison. And I own a ranch in southeast Colorado, and about a mile away, I can see a prison. And I was at a restaurant one time, and one of the guards came in and sat down, and I sat down next to him, he asked me where I live, and I told him, and I joked, and I said, "But everyone says they never stop at the first house." And he said, "That's absolutely false. They'll come right through the windows." And I'm not, you know, not to make light, I know that the applicant has a business model. I'm not sure why it's here, but this is not the right neighborhood for trash trucks and the smells that come along with it. Finally, I would just add, my client is a partnership of individuals. They're all family members. They don't, they're not employed by the partnership. They have other partnerships, or they have other properties that the same family owns through different LLCs around the country. But my contact is a 30-year pilot. He was with the Air Force, and now he is one of the top pilots for one of the largest airlines. When this thing first came up, when the proposal first came up, and I mentioned it to him, he was who pointed us to the FAA position statement. He said, "This is absolutely a real thing, and at 3,500 feet from the edge of a runway, there is a significant risk of bird strikes. And it's not anything that we're making up. It's not pie in the sky. It's really there." And he said, "Just, you know, if you need any refresher on that, watch the movie Sully. And keep in mind, we don't have a Hudson River anywhere nearby if somebody has to make a quick landing." In closing, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Jim Mahoney and Corey for doing, putting a lot of this together. Again, this is an unusual situation when you have four different applicants of a developed park, and we get that. But we hope that you will see the fact that this group would come together and put resources behind an annexation is an expression of just how important the various owners feel about this and the decisions before you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else for applicant-wise? Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and hit stop on the clock. Hold on here. And last value. There we go. All right. Next up, we have representatives from, let's see here, from Vista South. This is your opportunity to come on down. Again, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please. Once the first person gets done with their address, I'll start the clock, and you guys will have the same 30 minutes, same rules apply once we get down to zero. I'll cut you off so we can get onto public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Bill Curiagis with the law firm of Vought &amp; Johnson, 95017th Street, Suite 1600, Denver, Colorado. We've got a hearing brief as well as some materials we'd like to pass around if we could have my colleague come up to the...
Sure.
May I approach Carver?
Sure, absolutely. This is your time, so continue on.
Sure. So, as Mr. Carver said, this is an unusual situation. And I want to be clear about why we're here tonight. What we're here for is to address the situation where my clients, which is Vista South LLC and Mountain Way South Metro LLC, and just for the ease of sort of referring to them, I'll just refer to them as Vista South, have submitted a site application to use their property in a way that has been allowed at that location for 20 years. And we've got essentially a group of the public, other landowners, other jurisdictions, and most notably, the Town of Parker, all engaging in a coordinated attack on that effort to use the property that they have in accordance with the rights that were in place at the time that they bought the property. Now Vista South has tried, on multiple occasions, to work with the town. It didn't have to be this way. An effort was made to try to have a dialogue with the town about addressing any legitimate concerns that they may have about the nature of this facility. There were discussions about annexation. There were discussions and offers from the town to try to help my client find an alternative location for this facility in the area. But there wasn't any follow-up on that from the town, and efforts that Vista South made to reach out and extend an olive branch on this issue on multiple occasions were rebuffed. Now, for background here, as was noted earlier, Vista South purchased this property in December of 2016. But before it did so, it was specifically looking for a site where it could build a recycle and trash transfer facility. And the appeal of this site in particular is that it has that zoning in place as a use-by-right in the county right now. And in fact, it's had that use as an allowed use at that location since 1998. And we heard the testimony from representatives of the petitioners, every one of those buildings was built after 1998. They knew at the time, either they or their predecessors knew at the time that these properties were constructed, that the zoning in place was there, that a trash transfer facility could be built, that a jail could be built in this location, that the other uses were all allowed. This wasn't, should not have come as a surprise to anyone. And now, of course, as I said, Vista South's intent when they purchased this property was to pursue this use. They engaged in due diligence. They confirmed that the zoning was in place. They confirmed in writing from Douglas County that this was an allowed use. They confirmed with the developer and the Design Review Board for ComPark that this would be a permitted use. So they did their homework coming into this. And so that is their intent, and they have filed a site improvement plan application with Douglas County in order to get that approval. So a little bit about the facility. First of all, it's a critical piece of the overall regional waste and recycle management facility, infrastructure for this region. The proposal is for a state-of-the-art facility. It's unlike, for example, we heard reference to the Commerce City Fire, which is an open kind of facility. This is a fully enclosed facility, state-of-the-art, attractive from the exterior, landscaped to provide additional screening, and basically designed in the best way possible to mitigate any potential concerns about things like noise and odor and those kinds of concerns that folks have raised. In short, as far as it goes, this is a good plan for a necessary use that's needed for the area, occurring in a good location for it. But from the time that the site plan application was filed with the county, Vista South has been the subject of repeated attacks on this proposal from both the town and from other interests. We've heard reference to the fact that the town has opposed the site improvement plan application. Specifically, the town invoked an existing intergovernmental agreement with Douglas County, arguing that that precluded the processing of the application. Douglas County disagrees with that. The town filed a lawsuit against Douglas County, seeking to stop Douglas County from processing its application. Again, Douglas County is opposing that suit. We had two of the petitioners, other landowners in the area, two of the petitioners for tonight's application, filed a hostile rezoning application, seeking to rezone Vista South's property over its objection in the county. That's currently pending. And now we have this effort, coordinated effort between the town and the property owners here, to pull Vista South's property into the town and to cut off Vista South's ability to pursue the use for which it purchased its property. So now you have in front of you hearing notebooks that we're submitting for the record. That starts with the hearing brief, as well as some other background materials outlining what we've got is legal arguments that address the authority of the town to pursue this approval tonight and other problems, particularly with the zoning. To be clear, we're making a record here. Vista South does not intend to go away. Town Council's approval of these applications this evening could result in years of litigation addressing the rights of the town to do what it's trying to do tonight, and Vista South attempting to vindicate its property rights here. But frankly, given the situation, Vista South really doesn't have any other choice. As an initial matter, the town should not be holding this hearing tonight. There was a reference from Mr. Hoffman in his letter to petitions that were filed by Vista South to annex the property into Centennial. Now, the reason this was done, this was not some kind of a tactic. This was done because Vista South has no say in this process. We're here, we're given an opportunity to speak, and we certainly appreciate that. But we don't have any ability, my client has no ability, to actually express its will. It's being sort of pulled in to the town without its consent. Under the Annexation Act, there is a procedure provided whereby a property owner in this situation can petition to annex its property into another municipality. And in this situation, my client's view is that petitioning into Centennial would give us an opportunity to have sort of a fair hearing, because frankly, they haven't felt like they have gotten that with the Town of Parker. It also provides a procedure by which my client is supposed to be entitled to a vote, to actually express its will in a meaningful way that has an impact on whether or not the property can be annexed and in what kind of situation. And specifically, under Section 114 of the Annexation Act, when there is a pending annexation petition filed to another municipality, there is a statutory mandate that both municipalities hold their proceedings in abeyance completely pending the holding of that election. The fact that Centennial unlawfully voted to reject the petitions, violating the provisions of the Annexation Act, doesn't change that situation. The Annexation Act has a non-discretionary process and a set of procedures that municipalities have to follow before they are allowed to exercise their legislative authority to determine whether or not to annex property, and that wasn't followed here. While Mr. Hoffman was correct in noting that my clients were unsuccessful in getting While Mr. Hoffman was correct in noting that my clients were unsuccessful in getting preliminary relief from the Douglas County District Court, the fact that we were not able to get preliminary and in fact, emergency relief, does not mean that this matter is resolved, or that that issue is dropped, or in any way done. This issue is being preserved and will be potentially the subject of additional litigation. The hearing brief also outlines several defects with the zoning application that's before you. As an initial matter, the zoning application form is incomplete, as I'm sure you are familiar with. You guys see these zoning applications all the time. You have the applicant signing, or a representative of the applicant signing, indicating their consent to the zoning application. Vista South and Mountain Way South Metro do not consent to the zoning application. They have not signed the application, and they will not do so. This is just a simple and obvious violation of the town's requirements with respect to a rezoning. The second problem is that the proposed zoning here to be adopted is a new PUD. And under the State PUD Act, which is not modified under Parker's law, the consent of all of the landowners who are going to own property within a new PUD has to be obtained prior to the creation of a new PUD. And again, as I stated, just for the record, to be clear, my clients do not consent to the creation of a new PUD here. Another thing for the council to consider is that this petition, approval of this petition and of this zoning application is bad public policy. It sends a message that Parker doesn't respect the private property rights of property owners who own property in and around the town. This was an investment that was made in reliance on existing zoning and gave rise to a coordinated attack by Parker and other interests seeking to undermine the existing entitlements of my clients. Just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. Now, to be clear, my clients take this entire situation, the hearing, the way that this petition and application has been processed frankly, at record speed, and the town's role of depriving Vista South of a clear entitlement and its ability to use its property as it had planned, very seriously. And if this presentation sounds ominous, it's because of the gravity of what we're talking about here. This is an unusual situation. Vista South bought its property with unambiguous entitlements to do this use as a use-by-right in this site. It confirmed that entitlement in advance. It did everything it was supposed to do to establish that it could build this project at this site, and it's made every effort to try to address any kinds of legitimate concerns about the impacts that might be perceived about this kind of a facility. Despite this, every effort has been made to stop this, not to work with Vista South, but to stop Vista South, regardless of their wishes, regardless of their investment, regardless of the actual impacts. But again, as I said, it didn't have to be this way. Vista South is still willing to work with the town to address legitimate concerns, to work with the other folks, the other stakeholders, the interest holders in this room, to try to address concerns, to reassure that certain perceived problems are simply perceived problems and are being overblown. This facility could be an asset to the town, to the region, to the overall advancement of the waste and recycling goals for the state of Colorado, and it's important. And we would ask that the town deny the petition for annexation and the zoning application. At this point, I'm going to turn over to my co-council, Michael McCarthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor Wade, council members. My name is Michael McCarthy. My address is 1700 Lincoln Street, Denver, 80202. Bill Kuriajus is the land use lawyer in this matter. You may be familiar with Bill from prior appearances. My role here is as a trial lawyer and a litigator. And in that role, I'm not here to rattle sabers. What instead I'm here to do is to make a plea to you as elected representatives of the city of Parker, in the discharge of your responsibilities, to stop, look, and listen before you proceed forward with a situation that will be litigious for years. And it'll be litigious for years because the way the matter is postured at this point in time, my client has no other alternative but to litigate. I don't have a fancy slideshow to present to you, but just as an initial remark, I think what I do have to share with you is a quotation from a famous American who practiced law in central Illinois, where I grew up, that might be very applicable to this situation and which I urge you to consider in terms of your responsibilities as public representatives and to manage the risk for this town. The quote is this: "Discourage litigation. Persuade your neighbors to compromise whenever you can. Point out to them how the nominal winner is often the real loser." Some of you may recognize that's Abraham Lincoln in his notes on a law lecture. It is advice that any trial lawyer like myself takes very seriously. Despite that that's how, that's what we practice, we are remiss if we don't warn our clients to do everything they can to avoid litigation and to turn to litigation only as a final resort. As Bill pointed out, our clients, Vista South, they have been upfront and transparent in their approach to this project. There's nothing hidden. The zoning on this matter, at the time that the other property owners acquired, their interest was not hidden from anyone as well. Vista South always has been, and I'm here to tell you tonight, they remain willing to reach reasonable compromises with the town and other interested stakeholders with respect to the operation and the use of this facility. That offer will stand, and it'll stand throughout the litigation. And in that respect, I urge you to consider that. What has happened here, and this is not something you're going to want to necessarily hear, but what has happened here from our client's perspective, I hope you can understand, is that governmental power has been yielded here to overwhelm the interests of a private business enterprise. You all, as the Parker Town Council, wield a lot of power. And part of that power is to accept and approve an annexation petition. The result of that annexation petition will be to strip Vista South of the rights that it reasonably understood it had when it spent two and a half million dollars to acquire this property a year ago. So what we have in the present situation is the use of annexation, which, under Colorado law, as you know from sitting in the chairs that you do, in circumstances like this where you have a non-consenting landowner, annexation is a blunt and lethal instrument. It can just end the discussion from a land use perspective until a court rules otherwise. And we ask you to think about that and to stop, look, and listen before you proceed to use that blunt weapon against my client, because there's no other way to see it than to see you as using it against my client, as hard as that may be to hear. There has been a ruling this morning at 7:30 a.m. by the Douglas County District Court denying the preliminary injunction motion that we sought in an effort to stop this proceeding, to ask you to stop, look, and listen. But what I can share with you, and this is again, consistent with, I think, the advice that Lincoln shares with us, is that quick, early victories, like what happened this morning, have a way of withering when subjected to scrutiny by an appellate court or other judicial authorities. I've learned that myself through a long practice in trial and litigation, all too bitterly, that early victories are often snatched away by subsequent developments in protracted litigation. So our clients have instructed here, instructed us to pursue, as they had no choice but to do, the remedies that are available to them judicially, to challenge this. And what that will look like, and I can just tell you this because I've lived it from both ends of it, it looks like a long game. I mean, these are friendly walls for the annexation petition right now. I mean, I think we just have to acknowledge that, and I recognize that. But they won't always be so friendly, because that's the way the judicial process will work. And I say that not, again, not again to rattle sabers, but to urge you as the elected representatives and in your role as risk managers for the town, in terms of avoiding the costs and the protraction and the distraction of litigation, to stop, look, and listen before you proceed. Because oftentimes, the exercise of governmental power, which is what's happening here, will not withstand the test of time. Litigation is risky business, and we ask you to stay your hand to deny this annexation petition and to allow the process of compromise to play out as between the town of Parker, our client, and other stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do you guys have anyone else to come up? So I just want to make sure before I stop the clock, because this thing is like a thousand years old and it's hard to get it started again. So we're good? Okay. All right. Let me see if I can do this right. If smoke starts coming out from the lights above me. Okay. All right. Now we're good. All right. Next, so this is the next part of this hearing, excuse me, is where we will start with public comment. Again, just to go over the rules, if you're here for public comment on this item, there's a little slip of paper that you have. If you didn't get a little slip of paper, they are back up on that shelf up there. You're going to grab one. We're going to have you line up against this wall over here. I'm going to call up the first person. He or she is going to come up, hand this slip of paper to the attorney with the glasses and the silver hair sitting right up front. Jim, raise your hand again in case someone came in. Okay? You're going to come up to the podium here. You're going to state your name and address for the record. At that point, the clock above me is going to start ticking. When it gets down to zero, I'm not being mean or rude, but I'm going to say thank you very much, and I'm going to invite the next person up so that we can give everybody the opportunity. And again, just as a reminder, you all have the God-given right to share your opinions here tonight, and you absolutely should share your opinions here tonight. That's what you will do. What you won't do is there won't be booing and hissing, or name-calling, or any yelling or anything from the audience, whether you agree or disagree with someone up here at the podium. It's their God-given right for their opinion as well. So with that, let's open up public comment at 8:23 p.m. Go ahead and start lining up over here if you want, if there's anyone who wants to address council. And you didn't have to start from that side of the room. If there's anyone from this side, look at this, it's like, you guys are cool over here? Normally, I actually kind of section it off, and I say this part starts, and I didn't know if many of the kids would want to stand up, though. Good if you wanted to. And just watch your step as you're coming around. That way, we can keep things moving at a good clip. And then you all in the audience, just keep an eye over there. If the line starts getting shallow and you want to speak, then hop on up and come on over. All right. So, good demonstration. You've got your slip in your hand, correct? Oh, you already gave it to her. Okay. If you've already gave it, sir. If you already gave her your slip, you're good to go. So go ahead and come on up and state your name and address for the record, and then that's when I'll start the timer.
My name is Terry Malik. I live at 15314 Grasslands Drive, Parker, Colorado. Thank you, Mayor Wade, and council members, for your time tonight. I just want to say, there's something I can really say no, that you haven't already covered, except that I don't blame anybody in this fight, except Douglas County. They should have never, ever accepted the application from Vista South in the first place. Yes, that zoning use was put in place back in 1998, but times have changed, and it is no longer appropriate. And given the fact that the airport was there before this use was proposed, it should have some weight. So in my opinion, Vista South has issue with Douglas County, and that is who they need to go after for even accepting the application to begin with. So I know that you guys are here to consider the annexation, and you're also here to consider the zoning, and I ask that you please vote in favor of both. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up. I got told one time at one of these hearings that the sound of my voice saying, "Thank you, next up," was very annoying. So I apologize if I annoy anyone with that, but this is the only voice I got. I could do it in a cowboy voice, but I don't think you guys would appreciate the voices as much. So, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mitch Malik. That's my beautiful wife, Terry. I live at 15314 Grasslands Drive. We bought a house about, it's going on three years ago now. About eight months ago, we discovered this whole issue with the trash transfer. And to say the least, it's very heart-wrenching, and we are definitely opposed to that. But in all the opposition, I think our applicants and your staff have shown that there's a positive that can come out of this. We now know way more about our commercial people in our area. I think it's brought the community together, because this is something that is crucial that needs to be eliminated, the trash transfer. I got thrown into this kind of as a spokesperson without really being interested in doing that, but, you know, somebody had to start this, so my wife and I did. We've had numerous interviews on the TV. I've yet to get a response from the trash transfer people, and I have sent emails that would show where this facility is appropriate for the area. It is just not appropriate. Your staff, your legal people, do not believe that that is appropriate, that the annexation should go forward. It meets all the requirements of the annexation. There's a reason that the system says that you can annex people that aren't willing next door. The system is designed to get some congruency in the whole area, so it's important that you take that into consideration. That law was not put in just as a whim. It was put in there, and this is the type of thing that it will serve. In closing, I just want to thank the town council for listening to us. It's a critical thing to our community. The applicants have done an excellent job. The staff has done an excellent job. Your legal people have done an excellent job. There's no reason that this annexation should not be passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up. Name and address, please.
Dr. Tom told, Parker resident, but I work at 8401 South Chambers Road, Rocky Vista University. As the vice president and dean of Rocky Vista University, I just want to tell the town council that we bring the full support of our leadership and the students for, you know, the annexation of this and the cessation of building a trash transfer facility. Thirty years before I came to Rocky Vista, I was the county health officer from Moffett County, Colorado, and I adjudicated many state-of-the-art things that failed. And I think that you know that many state-of-the-art, well-positioned technology does not work. You know, I remain deeply concerned about the numerous inadvertent spills and health hazards, not only from bird strikes, but certainly from the potential of contaminating our runoff in groundwater, which I now know is the main source of Parker water. And as a western sloper, water is very important. So I certainly speak in favor of annexation and against this, and ask you to stand firm against these threats of litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up. Name and address, please, sir.
Bill Kurtz, 15422 Cooper's Hawk Way, Parker. And I agree with everybody else. I don't believe that the trash facility should go through. We live close there, and I don't know how these guys would like to live close to a facility like that, which they say, oh, it's all clean and stuff. You're going to have smell, you're going to have birds. I agree with everything else. The annexation should go through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up. My voice does sound kind of annoying. I got to do it. Next up, please.
Thank you. Rowan Coffey, 8397 Grasslands Way. I've been a long-term resident of Parker, Colorado. I'm a member of the Parker Corral, a member of the Parker Running Club. I support local business. Not only do I live in Parker, live off of Grasslands Way, I run up Grasslands Drive every weekend, pass by all of these fine establishments, very familiar, walk my dog every weekend. So I concur with them, and I'm in favor of the annexation as a resident and as a long-term Parker resident. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Name and address, please. Name and address, please.
I'm David Metzler. I live at fifteen-eight-seventy Duckweed Court, which is in Dove Ridge. It's across the street ways there. I've lived there since two thousand and three. There's been a lot of construction and new houses being built, and these fine business people have light industrial work. And we have been following this into Doug, from Douglas County when they first talked about this, and we've gone to several hearings there. At one hearing, we asked them if they ever drove by this neighborhood to find who was there and what is there, and their answer was no. And after that, they did drive by. If you'd have drive by there and seen all the residents that live there, this is not an appropriate use of that land, period. And coupled with that, the amount of traffic, there's two ways into my, my residence. One is on Chambers, and the other one's all the way over on Jordan. And already, it will be tough to try to get in and out of traffic on Jordan with added truck, huge truck traffic, and coming in there and getting out. So it's going to disrupt the neighborhood and the lives of the people that live there, and people who've made an investment in their house, not knowing that Douglas County was going to do this and never been notified, because they didn't notify our HOAs. And I appreciate you, Mayor and the council, and your business people, and I thank you for having these, and I agree with, this should go through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Tracy Berlin Game, and I live at one-six-zero-four-six Brooklime Court in the Dove Ridge subdivision. I would just like to address something that Vista South said earlier, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. And I think that, obviously, the location for this, not appropriate, regardless of what the zoning is. This area has changed dramatically in the last fifteen, twenty years, and since nineteen ninety-eight, when it was originally zoned. And yes, we bought our home there, knowing what was across the street on Chambers, and that it was warehouses and storage and things like that. I don't think anybody here probably went and dug through county records to see what all the zoning was around their homes when they purchased them. I, I will know to definitely do that in the future. While I do agree that having recycling and trash transfer facilities are necessary for our communities, this is just not the right place, and the county never should have accepted this application. They obviously had not been by the area. I can tell you, having lived there, we are a neglected little corner by the county. They, they truly neglect us there. So I am definitely for the annexation. I, I would love to be a part of Parker in this neighborhood, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, sir. Name and address, please.
I am Richard Leonard, eighty-four-fifty-one Dove Ridge Way, and I've had the pleasure of living in Parker since two thousand and one. You know, the thing that's so nice about Parker, that a lot of us live here, is that it is a very neighborly place. And so, when you come into a community, you look around at your neighbors, and you want to be a good neighbor. And so, you not only take what you have, you also look and see how what you do is going to impact your neighbors, because, like you guys are being right now, good neighbors and good stewards over our community. Has Vista South looked at the impact that they, as a neighbor, to the existing neighbors around them, and what is going to do? The answer is no, they have not. Centennial Airport is there, bird strikes. Have they addressed that? No. I, myself, have seen two or three planes that haven't made the runway, that fortunately, there was some vacant land that they could land on around Centennial. The other thing is, how is the truck traffic? They, on their study that they presented, did not even come close to what was impacting the area, let alone what, what it's going to do to roads. And then you have the diesel. They haven't even addressed that. You have tons and tons of diesel exhaust that is going to go into a medical facility, training doctors, people that want to be outside using their property. So, sir, just because you think you have the right and you've purchased the property, I'm sorry to tell you, but you aren't being a good neighbor.
Thank you, sir. Next up. Name and address, please.
My name is Rich Russo. My address is eight-four-eight-nine Canyon Rim Circle, Unit three-oh-one.
Last name again, one more time.
Russo, R-U-S-S-O. And I've been a resident since ninety-six, and I've seen the town grow and prosper, and I want to continue to be that way. The other thing is, is I thank the town for going through the proposal of the annexation. I'm full support of it, and I think it's a positive, proactive mood for the local businesses, as well as the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Susan Kurtz.
If you could go over to the microphone. Sorry, dear.
My name is Susan Kurtz, one-five-four-two-two Cooper's Hawk Way, Parker. And basically, I am for the annexation. I don't believe this facility is going to improve the Town of Parker. The Vista South is saying that it's, you know, allowed because of the nineteen ninety-eight filing, but since that time, there have been hundreds of amendments to ComPark. Compark and Douglas County both list this industrial park as light industrial. The trash transfer simply would not qualify as light industrial. It's very heavy industrial. We cannot allow Parker to become another commerce city. And that's, you know, even if they were to dramatically seal their trash trucks and make them all electric, it's still going to cause problems. We are definitely for the annexation, because we've got to preserve Town of Parker. We need to preserve our neighborhood. This facility does not belong in our neighborhood. I heard there's some land open near Lyman.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, ma'am. Name and address, please. Okay, so just before you go, I'm going to stop saying name and address, please. Everyone knows name and address, okay.
My name is Jacqueline Shaw, and I live at eight-four-eight-nine Canyon Rim Circle, Number three-zero-six Inglewood, Colorado, eight-oh-one-one-two. And I would just like to point out, I think it's really great that they bought the land for two-point-one million dollars, but I purchased my home with all of my savings and everything that I had, and this is all I have. I am a single person living in my condo, and I look forward to one day having a yard. I look forward to one day having a family. And if this trash transfer goes through, I don't see that happening anytime soon, because the value of my property will go down, and that is my life savings. We were at, you guys were asked to stop, look, and listen. If this goes through, I will have to stop, look, listen, smell, hear, everything, every day, that comes through that trash transfer facility. And I don't have a choice, because I don't have the luxury of having two-point-one million dollars to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Darian, and I live at one-five-five-four-zero Canyon Gulch Lane, Unit three-oh-seven.
Would you spell your first name, please?
Sure, it's A-D-R-I-A-N.
Okay. Didn't sound like you said Adrian, I just wanted to make sure. All right, go ahead, sir.
And I just want to say that I support the annexation and rezoning. I've been in the, the area for about thirteen, fourteen years now, and I just don't feel like it's the right location for this facility. And I do have grave concerns in regards to the traffic. There's a lot of traffic as, as it is now, and the environmental, potential for environmental hazards. So I appreciate you all considering this, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, next up.
My name is Normandy Fallon, and I live at one-five-four-six-oh Canyon Gulch Lane in Inglewood. What the picture doesn't show you is that the condos are right on Chambers. My, my living room is twenty-five feet from Chambers. Last week, I counted four hundred semis that went up and down the street for ten hours. I'm retired, I have time. I know, boring, but I have nothing against garbage. My father was a garbage man for forty-five years. I was a nurse for forty-five years. So this is my forever home, because I'm like, going to die there. So...
Oh, dear.
My problem is that my condo vibrates. When I open the blinds, and I only have three windows, all I see are semis back and forth for all the building up north, up south. So if there were that many trucks in the day I counted, and they add two thousand dirty diesel, shifting gears, trucks, twenty-four hours a day, I can't even open my windows. I can't even enjoy my five-by-seven patio that I paid twenty-five thousand dollars over asking for. Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bitter. So anyway, that's my story, and also, I'm also in the direct flight path. So I don't bother, I don't mind about the planes, these businesses are wonderful. It's just not here. I drove all around that area today. There's hundreds of acres. Find someplace else.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Hello, my name is Curtis Hayes at one-five-eight-two-five Club Rush Court in Dove Ridge. We've heard a lot of comments, with my wife and I, we both support the annexation. We came from Iowa about short of two years ago, and we came out here because of our children and our grandchildren. And we are in the process of transferring assets from Iowa to Colorado. And we did a tax exchange on a beautiful property in Dove Ridge, that we think the neighborhood and the area is absolutely beautiful. And had we known that this was a possibility of a contention here, most likely we would have not. We have been in the real estate business in Iowa, we're retired now, but for thirty-five years. And in our personal opinion, we believe that if this annex, or if this transfer station goes in, we believe it'll affect the property values twenty to twenty-five percent. On a half a million-dollar home, you can do the math. And I, I can't imagine what it would do to the assessed valuations of the entities involved in this, but it wouldn't be a pretty picture. I don't think it's a healthy picture for anybody. The attorneys for Vista South said, talked about threats, and talked about you folks being good risk managers, and that, that's your role. You are to be the risk managers for the people of Parker, and I believe you are, and you understand the, the whole picture. But if, in my opinion, if Vista South moves forward on this, they, they talk about not having friendly walls, there won't be friendly walls. I don't think there's any place for them here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, ma'am.
Hi there, Sabrina Ruiz. I live at eighty-three-ninety-one Feather Grass Court, Parker, Colorado, eight-oh-one-three-four. We've lived here about twelve years. We relocated from a really busy area to a nice, quiet residential in the suburbs. We fell in love with Parker. We really just did. We raised our family there, we've been there about twelve years. We love our neighbors, we've got to know some really great neighbors. Terry and Mitch really brought all of us together. We love the community. We knew that it was a business area, but we had no idea, and our HOA did not, no one was notified of this. We talk about compromise. I don't know how you can compromise with trash and planes falling out of the sky from the, the birds. It's just not something that belongs in the community and where we are in the residential area. Thank you so much for your hard work and your support, and we appreciate you, and we stand behind all of you in supporting this annex that we hope will go through. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is student Dr. Eugene Master. I'm a third-year student at Medical School, Rocky Vista University, as well as a resident at eighty-four-twenty Canyon Rim Trail, Unit one-oh-five, which is located directly across the street from the proposed site. There's a lot of focus tonight on the trash facility, but I wanted to keep an objective perspective on the proposed annexation. The area in question has grown to become a strong community, and that's clearly represented here with the residents and businesses that are representing us tonight. The nature of a community is where members support each other in growth and development, yet I don't see how any of the facilities currently in question, such as trash facilities, jails, storage warehouses, and cemeteries, are in any way support the goals of a community. All they do is stunt future growth and development and value in any community. The trash facility is simply one example of a neighbor that only hurts its other neighbors through traffic, pollution, noise, safety, and financial harm of property value. I believe that such facilities belong in areas that have not yet developed. I understand that Vista South hasn't invested much time and money in efforts to plan such a facility, but I'm sorry that they chose to act so late to build after the community grew to what it is today. Hurting your neighbors is bad public policy, and just because you can build something doesn't mean you should. To more specifically address the transfer site, I used to live at Hampton and Tower in Centennial. Hampton is a large six-lane road, which is frequented by large trash semi-trucks that travel from I-225 to Gun Club Road approximately nine miles away. Yet along the whole way, you can find trash, potholes, and damage from those trucks. Even though that facility is tucked away somewhere where there is no other development, they still affect the community for miles out. As a future homeowner, I would never look to purchase in a region if such facilities went up, and as a student, I would never want to attend a school near such facilities. Such facilities stunt the growth in all community, and therefore, I ask Vista South to stop, look, and listen to the people in this room before threatening the community with years of litigation, as that's bad public policy. I fully support this annexation, tonight's comments towards it, and I ask the council to stand strong to these threats and to support the annexation proposed tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, ma'am.
I'm Jill Pitcher at four-five-seven-nine-five Coal Creek Drive. I'm an osteopathic family physician, current associate professor at Rocky Vista University, and I moved a little bit east of here in nineteen ninety-two. So I've had a lot of time to watch the thoughtfulness of how the Planning Commission and this town council have put into thirty years' worth of growth, and it has been very good growth. It's created a very premier community that people who live here love to say we live here, and people who don't live here would love to say that they do. So for many reasons. And that, that growth has now come into an area that clearly have been given, you know, massive amount of evidence of the high quality of professional business in the area, as well as the high quality of the residential communities that are right there. I have an appreciation for Vista South's ability to build a very state-of-the-art, at least mostly enclosed, facility, but you can't change the trucks. And I don't think you can change over sixteen-hundred visits on a constant basis coming through the area. So as much as they could put into the facility, I think there's, there's no way to make that compatible. I also want to let you know that I've got over six hundred students at that school that are investing, I learned today, an average of eighty thousand apiece, between tuition, yeah, tuition and living expenses, and that's a lot. That's a huge investment that they are putting into their future, and what is coming back to the county and the city from that is not insubstantial, although our neighbors clearly have put tens of millions of dollars of investment into that area. So I want to recognize that you have an amazing amount of trust from the community that we do give you and give you freely, and understand that what you are being asked to do is very hard in this decision, but you do have the full backing of the community, and the thanks for all of us to come up and, and let you know how we feel about it, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. And before, before you go, high schoolers, I was kidding when I said I would embarrass you if you go, but I am kind of embarrassing you now. It's okay if you need to get back to get your homework done, so... All right, name and address, please.
Hi, Claudia Forty, eight-five-two-seven Dove Ridge Way, Parker, Colorado, eight-oh-one-three-four.
Uh, would you do your last... Would you do your last name one more time?
Fordy, F-O-R-D-E. And I also live in Dove Ridge with a lot of my neighbors in here. And first, in case I forget to say it, I am in support of the annexation. 10 gazillion thousand percent. And one of my neighbors also wrote down or also said something that I wrote down, that this gentleman said is, just because you can, doesn't mean you should. And we're not going away either. And years of litigation, that's fine. It's extending the time that the trash facility will go in. So can I say, bring it on?
Sir, next up? Next up, please.
Hello, my name is Doug Fordy, F-O-R-D-E. I live at 8527 Dove Ridge Way. That was my wife, obviously.
So you guys want to, do you guys know each other?
I, I think I do. I've lived in that house that lives in Dove Ridge since 2000, November of 2000. I've done a lot of work to my backside of my house to enjoy the mountain views. But if you look really close from the back of my house, you see all these nice new buildings that all of them have put up. Then I was gonna have to look at all the tree, birds flying around over the trash facility if that goes in. I don't really want to see all those birds in that area. I have enough birds that come naturally into my neighborhood and I think I'd much rather enjoy that instead of seagulls flying around trying to pick up trash in the neighborhood. The other thing about this transfer facility is gonna bring a ton of traffic into our area. I have spoken to you guys once before about all the cars and everything going through our neighborhood. It has helped with the two or single lane that's gone through Cottonwood. It has helped. But I still continually get trash truck that comes through our neighborhood when it's not even a trash day for other people in the area getting trash. So what's to say that those trash trucks are still not gonna come through our neighborhood if that transfers facility goes in? I'm just sick and tired of the traffic in our area coming through our neighborhood. I understand that I live in a neighborhood that's a cut through. I get that. But come on, it's just ridiculous the amount of trucks that could be potentially put on the road just from one facility when we still have a transfers facility on Jordan Road, right down off of, just south of Arapahoe Road. There is a transfer facility right there that all of our trash goes to. Why do we need another one in the area of maybe two miles as the crow flies? It's just ridiculous to have this. And how, yeah, they have the right to, you know, put this trash facility in, but they have to think about all of the neighbors that live there. We live in that area all the way down. We're there all the time. I work out of my house. So I would be seeing all these trucks all the time, just not on the weekends. I'd see them all the time, day in and day out. So I really support the annexation and rezoning for this area. Thank you for my time.
Thank you very much. Next up, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Lori White. I live at 15744 Cristallo Drive. I am a resident in Stonegate Metropolitan District. So I'm actually not a resident of Parker. I do, I have four thoughts to share with you tonight. First, I wanted to share that I don't think this is a case of your average, not in my backyard type situation because as I'm not located directly next to this area, I am located in a portion of the neighborhood that is adjacent to Chambers. And, and I'm very concerned about the traffic of the trucks, the heavy diesel trucks or whatever their trucks nonetheless, and the noise that that would create in my, for my neighborhood. The second is that I also commute to an office that's located at Centennial Airport. And this morning, when I was driving to work, it was just like serendipitous, I guess, that while I was driving past this property, I watched a small plane approach. They were using that runway this morning to approach the airport. And it is shocking how low the planes are right over that property. It's, I just, I kind of had a catch of my breath when I saw that. And so despite the fact that this facility would be closed, as everybody has mentioned, the trucks, you know, the irony today was also, I, I ran home to manage a contractor that was working on my house and I watched our garbage get picked up in our neighborhood. And the funny thing was is the street cleaner came through, like I would say, three minutes before the garbage truck came through. And the funny thing was, of course, the garbage truck spilled something, you know, right after the street cleaner left. And so I can't, you know, what was it, 2,500 trucks, whatever that huge volume was? There's gonna be spills. There's gonna be, I mean, you can't avoid that. So I'm very concerned about that as a neighbor, seeing that happen in our area. And I think that concludes all of my thoughts. I just do want to say how much I appreciate the hard work that you all are doing related to this. I'm sure, so I'm a, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Stonegate Village Metropolitan District. So I'm sure when I saw those four inch big binders passed out right bef, you know, as the meeting had already started, my heart sunk along with yours because I can totally understand, you know, the gravity of what you all are facing this evening. So I just want to thank you for all of your time and the opportunity to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir?
My name is student Dr. Cameron Olson. I live at 8467 Canyon Rim Circle. And I'm a second year student at Rocky Vista University, but I also represent dual interest in this matter because we own a home in Canyon Rim. And we, we came to this area. I had, I had many choices of where to go to medical school. I, I was asked to interview at more than five different medical schools. And I chose this medical school for one reason in particular because it felt right. I came to this school, I interviewed, I looked around, I had friends here. And as I walked from this, walked from this apartment complex or condos across the street to the Rocky Vista University for my interview, I realized, this is where I want to live and this is where I want to go to school. I can walk to school. I hate commuting. And it was great. And I walked to school for a year and a half. And I'm almost moving on to rotations off to drive unfortunately. But it was wonderful to walk to school. I definitely recommend it. Try living close to where you do most of your day. So anyway, I am definitely in support of the annexation and the change of the zoning because it does not, the current zoning does not properly reflect the current area. I would also like to propose a major change to avoid this in the future. I know this is, it's easy to get tunnel vision, but I would propose to the council of Parker to address high growth areas once every five years. I know it might seem daunting, but to address high growth areas and the zoning thereof every five years in order to avoid situations like this in the future. Because obviously this is a, one of these is not like the other situation. And I think that we could all be happy on both sides of this if the zoning properly reflected what the town of Parker, which are we, the citizens, would like to have happen, which is to reflect the area and to maintain the, the integrity thereof. Two schools, high tech businesses, trap, no, trash, no, no, that doesn't fit. I would also like to ask, how many airplanes would need to fall in order to get the trash transfer facility shut down immediately? One. So if this, if you want this to be a long process, go ahead. Someday that will happen. And the number is one because the FAA is cutthroat. They will not tolerate this sort of facility. As soon as they find out, all hell will break loose. And the facility will be shut down anyway. And so I would say, please protect your investment. You've said you have no other option. That has been quoted multiple times. I would say to you, sell. Sell the property to someone who wants to be neighbors to a high tech area, medical schools and the other surrounding businesses and residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up.
Good evening. My name is Brad Tomball. I live at 15445 Cooper's Hawk Court, which is in the town limits of Parker. I live in the Dove Meadows community, which is made up of about 84 semi custom homes, which are an average value of about a half million dollars. Mountain Vista has asked that you consider their investment of 2.5 million dollars for the property that they purchased. I would instead urge you to consider your obligation to the hundreds of Parker residents that have invested nearly 40 million dollars in their homes, just in that one community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Hi, I'm Dallas Head, 8467 Canyon Rim Circle, Number 305. And I have lived in Douglas County my entire life, except for the two years that I was in Fort Collins for college. And I was four years old in 1998 when they first purchased this land. And I can tell you that a lot of things have changed since I was four years old. And a lot of things have changed since 1998. And I urge them to consider a change in their trash transfer facility location because things change over time. And I'm concerned of wear and tear on the roads, the smell and the health hazards that come along with that. My fiance and I have purchased this location for not just ourselves, but for our future family. And so I don't just urge you to pass this annexation in, for concern of the current residents, but also for the future residents of this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Hello, I'm Jake Miller. I live at 8467 Canyon Rim Circle, Unit 305. That was my fiance that talked right before me. So, yeah. I have four points I'd like to share. The first is the wear and tear on the roads. We just recently had a new bridge constructed. It was basically under, or it was a, what's it called? It was damaged over time. So they just replaced it literally the month before we moved in, they finished up construction. So we're very excited about that. With the trash transfer facility, they're gonna be having all those trash trucks going on there. That's gonna create a lot of wear and tear on the infrastructure in the area and cause a lot of damage there. Also, when you look at the trash transfer facility, it has a right in, right out access on Chambers Road. What that means is that all the trucks will have to turn right into the facility and then right out of there. With that many trucks coming into there, there's gonna be undoubtedly a backup on the road. Right now, it's only a two lane road. So it would create a lot of backup in that area and increase further road congestion. It is also, Douglas County has this whole area slated as a medical growth corridor, which means that they want to basically take all the way from the Ridge Gate Medical Center to Chambers and increase the medical facilities in that area. Having a trash transfer facility in that area would not be beneficial. It would basically allow contaminants in the area and would make it so people trying to get healthy would have to go through in pure air, which could undoubtedly be negative to their health and health of all the others that are working there and commuting there. And, yeah. So the last thing is, we're here for the long haul. No pun intended. We are here to stay. We live there. We're fighting this and we will not go away. Thank you for your time and I support the annexation.
Thank you, sir. Next up.
Hi, my name is David Chung. I live at 16967 Blue Mist Circle in Cottonwood. And I support the annexation. My wife and I moved to Parker about a year and a half ago from LA and Silicon Valley. I am a former Googler who now works at Charter. So I am very proud to see Charter represented here.
Googler.
And we moved here because we fell in love with Colorado when we visited three years ago. And coming here was pretty much a dream come true for us. And we bought a home in Cottonwood. And we recently just bought another home here, pretty like a mile from here because we believe in Parker. We believe in the town that it is today. We believe in the town and what it will be tomorrow. I volunteer with the town on the special licensing authority with these fine ladies over here on the end. And I volunteer in Parker because it's honestly the first place that my wife and I have ever been proud to live in. And we lived in some pretty cool cities over the course of our life. And it's, and we love our neighbors. We love our community and our town. I've, I also serve as a vice chair on our Citizens Academy with the Parker Police Department. And my wife and I recently adopted a road right in front of the Pace Center that we're literally gonna clean with our bare hands. Not with an organization, just us two people and our dogs. And we're doing it because we love Parker and we love everything that this community stands for. And between my wife and I, we have seven jobs. I honestly don't have time to do this stuff, but I do this stuff because I love the community that we live in and we want it to continue to be great. And we do it because we've gone all in on being in Parker. And a couple of months ago, I participated in a website study here at Town Hall, another night that I sacrificed for the town. And it's really nerdy, but I got this sticker that says Parker Proud. And as someone who has a lot of cool stuff, it's one of the coolest things that I've ever got because it's somewhere that I'm really proud to live in. And it's one of my most proud possessions. So we all are really proud to live here. I think you've seen a lot of support from the community. And I support the annexation and I encourage the council to continue to make this a community that we're all proud to live in. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Next up. Can't see you around. There we go.
My name is Carl Thompson. I live at 8467 Canyon Rim Circle, Number 207. I've lived in my particular community since 2005. I was one of the original owners in that same community. I'm getting a chance to see a lot of my neighbors that I usually see just passing and walking and they take their dogs out and I just say hi to them and it's, it's wonderful. I love going into downtown Parker, Main Street here when they're wine walking and all the other community events. But I, I have to question why I would look at trash from my, my, my deck. When I come home from work, that's my place for zen. I sit out on my patio and I get to sit out there. I can have a cocktail. I can relax and unwind for my day. And the last thing I want to see is trash. And I can go over all the things. I've had, I heard a lot of wonderful arguments from my, my neighbors and members of the community. I can go over these things ad nauseam and it really is just gonna keep hitting home with the same things that a lot of people are saying. Please, annex this land. We don't, we don't need that. I'm not trying to begrudge them a business. I'm not trying to stop them from doing what they need to do, but I just don't need it in my backyard. I can't imagine that any of them want that in their backyard. I'm sure they live in, you know, they have a very nice place and they don't want to look at trash. And again, how many, how many planes will take? It really would only take one. So I appreciate it. I appreciate your time. I thank you so much for listening to all of us and letting us come in here. And please, again, my support is for the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Hello, my name is student physician Mia Nevola and I live at 10115.
Say that name. I, I heard the student physician and then I started to think that was your name. And I, it's not your name.
My name is Mia Nevola.
Thank you.
And I live at 10115 South Peoria Street, Unit 01201. I moved here from Washington to go to medical school. And I think I speak for a lot of other students that are schooled that we probably wouldn't have chosen this school if there was a trash, trash facility right next door. I know Dr. Pitcher mentioned that we, we spend about $80,000, but that's per year. We invest a lot of money to attend school here. And I just wanted to show our support. And I think I speak for about all 600 students when I say we support the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up.
Good evening. My name is Sergio Ruiz. I live at 8391 Feather Grass Court in Dove Ridge. And I am in favor of the annexation. I moved here in 2016 from California. Traffic, we came, we came to visit family. We love Parker. We decided to bring our kids here. It's a small town feel. Kids loved it. And the trash facility, it's just not gonna work. There's, there's a charter school right next to Rocky Vista. There's about 800 kids registered in that school. Every morning, you see a line of cars dropping the kids off. Every afternoon, same line of cars picking the kids up. Add 1,600 more trips a day, it's just not gonna work. When I take my daughter to school on Wednesday, to work. When I take my daughter to school on Wednesdays, she has laid start a shop around, takes me about 10 minutes to cross Chambers, just to try to get over. So 1,600 is just not going to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up.
Good evening. My name is student Dr. Emelius Nevee. I live at 10115 South Peoria Street, number 01-201. I am in favor of the annexation. I am a second-year medical student at Rocky Vista University. And I would like to reiterate the support of 600 students for this annexation. Speaking for our school, we are quite close to the annexed area and this would have a significant impact on future students who are looking to come as well as current students. So thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you very much. Before I close public comment, I want to make sure if there's anyone in the hallway or watching on any of the telecast in the other room or anyone else, this is your last opportunity. Seeing no one running, we're going to close. Oh, no, that's just Jason Rogers and, gosh. We're going to, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at 9:12 PM. Jim, before we go up to us, is there anything else that we need to consider before council deliberates?
Yes, Mayor. One of the items that you're considering tonight is ordinance number 2.59, series of 2018. This is the ordinance concerning the annexation of the Grasslands Prairie Trail property that's currently located in Douglas County. If you turn to section three, and these are findings that are contained in the ordinance, it says more than 50% of the owners of more than 50% of the property have petitioned for annexation. Based upon the testimony and evidence that was submitted in the record, I'm suggesting that you amend that section to add some additional information. I'd like to read it into the record.
Okay, go ahead.
So currently, it says more than 50% of the owners of more than 50% of the property have petitioned for annexation. And I would add, the town council specifically finds, based upon competent evidence presented during the public hearing, that the property ownership transfer between Vista South LLC and Mountain Waste South Metro LLC was a tactic to manufacture additional property in contravention of the Municipal Act of 1965. Additionally, the filings of three annexation petitions with the city of Centennial for a portion of the land area described in Exhibit A, including the filing of a lawsuit against the town of Parker and the city of Centennial seeking to enjoin tonight's hearing, was another tactic in contravention of the Municipal Act of 1965, which tactic was rejected by the Douglas County District Court. As a result, the town council, the town of Parker hereby refuses to recognize this transfer or the annexation petitions that were submitted to the city of Centennial as valid.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim. All right. So with that, this is the point in the evening where council has, if they have questions, they have comments, deliberation, this is the time for it to happen. And with something of this importance, this big, as opposed to just kind of a free-for-all, I like to have, give every council member an opportunity to have the floor, ask questions, give comments and so on. So let's start down here with Mr. Dyak.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to start with thanking the presenters and staff. This is a lot of time, effort, energy that was expended and I greatly appreciate your attendance here. I also want to thank the people who came out. Before my eyes, I saw a group of citizens become more of a community and I hope it continues beyond tonight. So thank you for coming out and giving us your thoughts. This is a tough and unique circumstances, I think many people have articulated. But to me, you know, I think this is exactly the type of annexation Parker needs to consider. It brings existing employment base and future expansion for the economic base. We heard from a Fortune 100 company. We heard from a highly educated employment base that's going to be drawn. We heard from family businesses and high-end medical products outfit. I've been here 35 years and this is, this is a dream list that we could only wish to get in Parker. And to get this in Parker and to get more of it potentially, I think is a positive. I believe it's consistent with the master plan. It was within our urban growth area. We had a timeline that was sort of laid out. And to me, I'm a little troubled by the timeline and the due diligence. The zoning in 1998 was out there, was stated. The town and the county had an IGA in 2002, which restricted general industrial. And the property was purchased in December of 2016. So to me, within that due diligence, I don't know what went wrong. But, you know, to me, I believe that I value the IGA and I'll stand by that. So to me, I will accept staff's findings and will support the annexation. Thank you.
Debbie.
He has like seven pages.
I got more.
He's got seven pages of notes.
You got more?
And I told him if he read them, I'd kill him. So I too support the annexation. It certainly seems to be compatible with the surrounding development that's already there. It will expand our economic and tax base. I appreciate all the folks that, I mean, it's important to you. You, unless you own a yacht, your home is the most valuable possession that you have. They tell me a yacht costs more. I just, I don't know. So that you've stayed, you know, staff gets paid. You all are here because you want to be and we appreciate it. We normally don't, aren't here this late, but sometimes we are. So again, to reiterate what John said, thank you all for being here. And Johnny took all my notes.
All right. Renee.
Thank you, everybody, from all viewpoints for participating in this process. We do appreciate it. I believe that the annexation supports our urban growth boundaries, our master plan and our plan development. I also believe that the trash transfer facility is not compatible with the surrounding uses, violates the IGA between Parker and Douglas County, violates our comprehensive development plan. I do believe that the proposed use is not appropriate at this location and the proposed use presents several nuanced conditions.
I thank everybody for all the testimony. I thank Otten Johnson for a well-stated book for what you brought in. I thank you for that work. I thank staff and I thank all the applicants. I think this was a well-presented argument. I appreciate the decorum of this room. I thank the audience for maintaining the decorum of the public room. I do not take this decision lightly. Mr. McCarthy stated an elegant quote from President Lincoln.
... personally not like, but from a legal standpoint, there's really nothing you can do about it. I think what's challenging for me, and I think Mr. Rivero touched on this, is one of the things that I really do hold most dear from a principle standpoint is the right of a private property owner to develop their property as it's zoned and seen fit. I think though, that there were some missteps here, beginning with, Jim, if you can remind me, the letter that the Vista South folks got December of 16 neglected to mention the IGA that was in place with the town?
Councilman Martin, I think you're referring to the zoning letter.
That's right.
That was issued by Douglas County. Correct, there's no mention to the IGA or the comprehensive development plan in that zoning letter.
Gotcha. And I think as this process went along, the folks from Vista South really started to realize that this project wasn't being welcomed by the community around them. They've made a significant financial investment and to one of the gentleman's points, so has everybody around that area as a whole. But the one, I guess the one thing that probably bothers me more than anything is I do expect our businesses and our business community to also, you know, work at a certain standard or have a certain standard. And it's my opinion that, to a certain extent, the Vista South folks sort of found themselves with their hand caught in the cookie jar and had kind of been throwing a few things against the wall to see if they can get them to stick with, you know, making an annexation petition up into Centennial to see if they would come across county lines to annex the project in a last-ditch effort with the court in Douglas County, which was summarily dismissed, which I understand and I don't fault anybody for. But I think it's some last-gasp-minute straws when it's realized that this is just simply a project that does not fit in this location. So with that, I will also be in support of the annexation as well.
All right. Excellent. I'll save my comments for afterwards since I'm the mayor and I don't get to vote on stuff. I don't want to have any undue influence on you guys. So I'll either entertain further discussion or we have four items in front of you that I would need motions on.
I move to approve resolution number 18-032.
Second. Motion by John and a second by Amy. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve emergency ordinance number 2.259.
Second.
Before you take a motion in a second, I had suggested some proposed language to ordinance number 2.59. What is the council's reaction to that?
That lengthy one?
Yeah. So to me, I'd like to amend the motion and to include the comments that Jim Maloney has presented to staff.
So those would be the language that I read into the record, verbatim?
Correct.
Second.
I thought you were going to repeat.
Sorry. So we have an amended motion by John, second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item.
I move to approve emergency ordinance number 3.333. Also with the amended bits-
There is no amended language with that ordinance.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Josh and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And the last item.
I move to approve the annexation agreement.
Second. We have a motion by Amy and a second by Josh. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Unanimously, before we adjourn for tonight, just kind of my thoughts on this. Truthfully, for the attorney sent up front here, guys, thank you very much for your presentation, for the time you put into it. I know you're kind of in a hard spot. One of the things that makes, in most cases, Parker and Douglas County unique and different than other areas of the country or even of our state is partnerships that we form and communication that we have with our neighbors. That failed in this case, to be quite frank. I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat it at all. You will probably not find a council that is more supportive of private property rights than this council that's sitting up here right now. And you might be thinking, well, what the heck are you talking about? The private property rights of Vista South on this? Well, the reality is, you will also never find a council that follows the law more than this group sitting up here. And there's no way around it. We have an IGA, a legally binding contract with the county that specifically says this use is not allowed in this spot. Even though the county has made notice that they want to get out of the IGA, it is still in force. I can't go to my mortgage company and say the contract I have with you, I want to get out of it in the future, so I'm going to stop paying my payments now. That's not how contracts and the law work. So I feel for your client because your client did their due diligence. And for whatever reason, and it's very unique, I think in the, how many years have I been sitting here? Ten, 11 years that I've been sitting here. This is the first time I've seen a property of this size purchased without entitlements. I mean, normally, there's a little, hey, if we can't do what we want to do, then the contract ends and we don't have to buy the property. I mean, I feel for them. The 2.1 million bucks or whatever that they put out of pocket, that stinks, man. They bought a property that's not, they're not legally allowed to do what they want to do on it for this. It stinks. I wish there would have been more partnership between Douglas County and the town of Parker. I wish there would have been more partnership between Douglas County and Arapahoe County and Stonegate HOA and everyone else that's involved with it, but there wasn't for whatever reason. I think, aside from that, though, I like to look for the sunshine at, you know, the lemonade that we get with lemons. And the good news out of this is, we have been talking for as long as I've been sitting up here in some capacity with how we really want to engage the corporate neighbors that we have in this area. And guess what? Now we've got the four of you to come here and say, we are proud and really want to be in Parker and call Parker home. So the silver lining in all this is the fact that we are now able to have that community partnership relationship with four fantastic companies. More to come. Rocky Vista University has always been a jewel in our cap. This is an opportunity to showcase why Parker is different and Parker is so unique and why people should choose Parker to have their business and to call home. So I want to thank everyone who was involved for coming tonight, those of you watching at home, and for our town council for the time and effort and staff for that you guys have put into this. So with that, I'm happily going to adjourn our meeting at 9:40 PM.